It's 5:30 and we are ready to begin our July 11, 2017 school board meeting. Let's begin with an invocation on today. And that will be by trustee Banton, Sharon Barton.
Good morning. I'm the person who has the right to come to you like that. Thank you for this opportunity to serve you like that. Now we ask that you come into this club and make tough decisions before PIS, the end of the year, so that they can protect us. May I say you bless us, watch over us, and protect us in his name we pray. Amen. Let's stand for the place United States and Texas flag.
Let's pray, ladies and gentlemen, to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I pledge allegiance to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Our mission statement, our mission as the primary source of public education in the community is to meet the unique educational needs of our diverse population and providing a comprehensive quality education for students of the Port Arthur Independent School District. To prepare now the closed session, under the authority of the Texas Government Code, Sessions 551.071 and 551.074, the Board will meet in a closed meeting to consult with attorneys regarding paying or contemplating litigation, including settling offers and other legal matters pursuant to the attorney to the governmental body under the Texas Discipline Order Rules, professional conduct of the State Bar of Texas are clearly covered by attorney-client privilege. Under Consider Personal Recommendations, Texas Government Code 551.074, as follows: Consider and if appropriate, appropriate approved employment of teachers; consider and if appropriate, approved employment of assistant principal of Memorial High School; consider and if appropriate, approved employment of principal of Memorial High Grade Academy; discuss or deliberate regarding commercial or financial information received from the Prem-Cor Refining Corporation, Refining Group incorporated within the district may be commencing economic development negotiations. We're going closed session.
Mr. Gilroy.
Yes.
Roll call.
Point of order. Need a roll call to establish the order.
President Frank.
President.
Vice President Ambrose.
Here.
Secretary Brown. Trustee Barton.
Here.
Trustee Gilory.
Here.
Trustee Lofton.
Here.
Trustee Reed.
Now we go to closed session. Now we go to closed session.
Good evening all. The Port Arthur Independent School District Board of Trustees will now be being greeted in this session. We have no other participation. We do have staff reports discussing Chapter 313 with Dan Casey. We will now have updates on our law from Dr. Porter.
And we'll go back. Good afternoon to everyone. We are at the end of our week. As told, the Board will close on Thursday and we'll go off for two weeks of vacations. So we're excited about that. We've had a wonderful summer school session and everything is calm at this point. We would ask for staff reports that Mr. Casey can convey with a brief overview of 313 for our community. And then we will ask representatives from the letter to come forward after Mr. Casey has had his presentation. And then we'll have the other two.
Thank you, Madam President. Ladies and gentlemen, your Board, your Board, Dan Casey, of Casey Associates. Have you had before you for your initial consideration tonight, an application from the Prem-Cor Refining Board for a refinery project that they are proposing and that they are here with available resources? But basically, it's a project that has about $522 million in maximum taxable value. It is eligible for a property value limitation agreement. This is a program that the state established back in 2001. You have several of these here as well. Actually, one of the very first Chapter 313 that we worked on was an unfortunate work out for RISD. But basically, the value limitation is $30 million, kicking in 2022, '23 year, running for 10 years. The company benefits from lower MNO taxes. The school district benefits are several. One is that if they go ahead and build the project, is that the full project value is subject to INS taxes for your bonds. So there is benefit to your overall taxpayership, additional taxable value against a $1.2 million project. The other thing is that you can negotiate some, it would typically include whole margins provisions to make sure the district is protected against any revenue losses through the state funding, the form of the funding system. And that's a standard provision in these agreements. You come up with a standard feature. The other thing is that you can negotiate supplemental payments outside the finance system of about $200 per student, per year for your ADA. I think the initial estimate I was working with was about 700 students. But the step that you're considering tonight is to basically accept the application, forward it to the Controller's Office for their review. They will determine whether or not the application is complete. And once they determine that, then they commence a review. It normally takes about three months for them to come back and make their recommendation to you. They issue your certificate. During that process, one of the things you'll do is negotiate a contract of governance hours operates. The state prostrates a lot of that agreement as far as standard form. But as I said, the commitment tonight is if you decide to accept the application, is to forward it to the Controller to start the process moving. It does not commission you to a final agreement. That's going to have to come later. There'll be several steps through that as far as review by the Controller and negotiations between the district and the company. But as one is a decisive project, I think it's one that we can really, it's more than there is consideration based on our insurance. Would you have any current answer to any questions?
Trustee. Did a question to Mr. Casey?
Thank you, Mr. Casey. We would now invite Mr. Ginger, Mr. Novoset to come forward and give you what you have.
We've got to worry more about your considerations, applications for planning trade, no style of consulting, Mr. Casey. You have firemen, you have Valero slash Prem-Cor, and we're, we're getting to build a certified project. You kind of know, but we appreciate your consideration. This has been an important step in moving forward to get the project approved. It really helps the economics of the project. But you did get a very opportunity for the capital.
I mean, good evening. I am Greg Ginger, plant manager at Valero, Port Arthur. And essentially, what we're evaluating is, and I think you got the information, about whether we should build an additional operating facility inside our existing plant. Really, it would provide opportunities for us to continue to run additional crew rate and produce additional products during that time. We would, it actually has a hiring plan for both technical operations and maintenance personnel. You also have during the construction period, probably upwards to 500 construction workers. If you also look at what we've done in the past, throughout constructions, we do not tend to hire a EPC, which is an engineering procurement construction company. We hire local contractors and utilize those individuals so that they hire locally with their community. I think that's one thing Valero stands out as the way that we've constructed even our major projects in the past. So. Offer any additional information you'd like or answer any questions that you may have?
Yes, thank you, sir. Mr. Ginger, yes? Tell us for the citizens of Port Arthur, PIS, how this expansion will directly benefit our children, our city, our schools?
So really, if you look at the tax base that's created when companies invest in this area that we're in, we bring additional tax base, which what we're asking is again the incentive to get us to make the decisions to go ahead and invest. But that tax base will grow, and the tax rolls will provide taxing dollars to both the city, the county, the training district, and the school district in the area that we operate. We also end up hiring more employees to operate the facility on an ongoing basis. During the two years, like I talked about, there's probably a 500 contractor workforce per day that's in there. Those individuals and the employees that we lay higher also are ones that spend money under them, coming in, they're staying in hotels, they're staying in temporary residence, they're eating at restaurants. So they bring additional tax bases also to the local community that we operate.
And how many of those employees have come out of Port Arthur directly?
What we try to do is work, we work very hard to hire Port Arthur residents. I'll tell you what we have experienced, Total has experienced, Motiva has experienced, is as we track employees that we hire from Port Arthur, once those employees go to work for one of the major companies, they tend to not live in Port Arthur in about two to three years. We saw the same numbers that Total saw. They saw about 30 to 35% reduction in Port Arthur residents that if you look at them about two to three years down the road that you hire, they don't want to live in Port Arthur. So Joey needs to ask how many of your employees now live in Port Arthur. That number, we can't keep up with the number from that standpoint is because they actually leave the city. And I can't, I can't even tell you one way or another why they do that. But we do have a pretty good hiring practice that we use the Local Workforce Commission in Port Arthur. We just had 1,700 applicants for 30 positions that we, they started actually yesterday. If you look at the percentages of Port Arthur residents, all the way through the hiring process from the testing and then from the interview process, we end up, we end up hiring about the same amount of Port Arthur residents. So out of those 30, I think we had seven to, seven are made at a Port Arthur residence. So that I think we got a certain amount.
Good morning, trustee Lofton.
Yes, how many permanent jobs will, that will be available once the unit is up and running? How many permanent jobs? We're not talking construction job, we're talking process operating job.
Permanent jobs? So do we actually include it in the package?
So in the application, we put in 10 because that's the minimum that the state requires. But we're still evaluating, we're talking 30 to 40, so.
So I mean, the number we looked at is, it looks like from an operating perspective, so operators would be four per shift. So you have four times four plus additional four, so you have about 20 operators. Typically, you're also going to have some technical staff, engineers associated with that, and then maintenance staff. So you're probably at the 30 or 40 total employee.
Total employees.
And then depending on maintenance staff, you may have additional contractors that are also hired, end up being permanent employed, permanent hires, but then necessarily going on.
I can tell you why if that number goes down for Port Arthur people, they never leave here from the start, they just shoot the address.
Actually, we checked, we actually checked on it. They do it here.
Trustee.
I mean, I understand your comment, but we did check it also.
Mr. Ginger, I certainly understand your point about how Valero is hiring employees that, how it affects the tax base and has reciprocal effect of enriching the community. My question is a little bit different in that as a corporation and owner of this large refinery here in our city, does Valero, Port Arthur have a vision for how it will be through the years, a contributing member to the community? In other words, beyond the people that you hire and how those that you hire, you know, go out to eat here at our restaurants or maybe some of them settle here, but what about in some other ways where you benefit our community in another way, such as some sort of project that has an impact on the youth in our community or here even in our school district? That would help our, the ultimate goal of us or any school district is to make our students become productive members of society, taxpayers rather than taxpayers.
Sure.
How could maybe some of the blessings that your corporation has as a large and multi-billion dollar company, how could maybe you extend some of those blessings to our community?
You picked right in what I always like to talk about from a Valero standpoint. If you look at Valero from a company, it's probably one of the most distinctive companies that there is. Often you can go take a look at valero.com, you can go look at what we do for communities. I'll start with two main items. So Valero is the key sponsor to the Valero Texas Open that occurs in San Antonio. That is a children's charity that initiated about 95 years ago.
Yes.
Valero took it over 12 years ago.
Yes.
And in the first 83 years, that generated about $500,000 back to children's charities. Since Valero took it over, it has generated $122 million. And those dollars, this year, we have a committee, we have a set of employees that actually choose which children's charities are given to. So there's about $600 to $700,000 that is given back to this retirement, given back to children's charities in the area of the office. If you look every year, we, I think, Dr. Porter, we invited you to the presentation. You guys are more than welcome. We get together, it's about 23 to 25 charities that we invite in, we do the check presentations for those individuals. I think another one, as you look at it from a volunteer standpoint, we have over 10,000 hours a year employed in volunteer in this area that we, that we operate in, whether it be the Valero Kid Fest that just occurred at Carl, Carl Parker Center in Port Arthur, to where we put it on for kids to come and enjoy, meet their police, meet the firemen and the other activities that they have. The other one, the other big one that I'm very proud of is as far as representing the employees here, is United Way contribution. If you look at the South, mid-county, South Jefferson United Way budget is about 1.2 million. Valero contributes about 800,000 of that 1.2 million. So compared to other, all the other companies that are in this whole area, we contribute on, you know, over three quarters of that. And that's, that's generated by gifts by employees. And then the company matches it with another 50% is what they do from the United Way standpoint.
Yeah, thank you for your answer. And I want you to know that I look forward as the years go by of a partnership with CLPO and with this school district, because in our school district, the future of our community, hopefully we have students that want to continue to live in Port Arthur after they graduate from high school, graduate from any university in our state or in our country, and who go on and work for your company right here in Port Arthur.
Appreciate you.
I appreciate your answer. Thank you.
Trustee, your turn.
Yes, Mr. Ginger. I want to commit you to all those great contributions that you guys have made throughout the state of Texas and elsewhere. I'm mainly concerned and I'm really apprehensive about 313 agreement. From the standpoint, I was born and raised here. I, along with many of the residents of the city of Port Arthur, haven't really seen the benefits that we should be realizing today. Just to throw some notice out at you, we're looking at about 53,000 in population that haven't changed in, I think, about three, four years, right? We have the highest unemployment rate in the state of Texas at 8%. Ronald Rogers has about 4,240 folks unemployed. Now, we graduate 455 students every year for the last 10 years. My question is, what do you plan to do about those children that are graduating that are already qualified for, to be aboard of your mentoring program, to be employed as one of your employees, whether it's in maintenance or whether it's in operation? The concerns that I must stress upon you today, that's my concern on our kids. And in order for this city to recruit, to benefit, to fix itself, it's going to require more of an investment in the community. When we look at the cars, I leave 24 to 6 every morning, I see the traffic coming in and out, right? When they leave in the afternoon, they don't stop. When it comes in the morning, they don't stop. So that's not much of a benefit when we start looking at the tax dollars being spent in the city of Port Arthur in order for it to make significant changes that we need. When you speak of those folks that get hired on and move away, and I tend to agree with Mr. Lofton, you hire me, I'm not leaving anywhere. I'm going to build my own house. This is my community. So I tend not to buy it as much. And I am seriously concerned, this is a great benefit to Valero, and most of them are. The city has been reluctant to be on the winning side of any of these abatements. I hope that this potential relationship benefits our kids for generations to come. Not in word, but in deed, that we actually see remnants of possibilities that there's, I like to always call it, that our streets has been paved to go, because it is unacceptable to live in a city with three of the major or the largest refineries in North America, and we have the highest poverty rate. You know, so we got our crime. People tend to gravitate toward those things because they can't afford to pay for them. So crime rises. You know, you said 20 operators and, you know, 500 contractors and this, that and the other. That may be, but we need more of a long-term benefit or relationship. And I know you're more than capable of doing that for the city, because we've given them so much, the city has given them so much to, to, to benefit as well. And honestly, in my lifetime, I'll be 50 this year, and my grandfather worked for HSB team. There's other folks still here that parents worked for Texas. I remember my grandfather told me started off at $1.75 an hour, you know, some 50 odd years ago. Times have changed, those jobs are now pretty close to $40 an hour. I would like to see some of our kids who I know, and I think we just had this discussion about graduating 100 kids a year against some of our top kids. You know, we also have a technical side of our, our school district as well. A partnership, something that will simulate, give them some experience, something, it has to be more than in being one side. In this case, it's more one-sided, it's always been more one-sided, because we haven't ever seen what we really, our real full potential could be. And I'm asking you to consider this, as I consider a brilliant tool to this, is that there's somewhere in the middle that will be a mutual benefit for the citizens and the kids of generations to come, that this will be a place that they will be proud to call home. When you walk around and you drive around the city of Port Arthur, it automatically will turn, it'll start to turn. It's the problem. These people need jobs. And I'm not accepting the explanation that, well, we can't find even qualified. I know 455 just graduated who are qualified. And that's one problem with the job rules that you have in one year. I would encourage you all possible, your hiring, focus on our district and be a true neighbor, true partner. Because when I look at these other districts, how they're flourishing, they're benefiting, I would love to see the city benefiting in the same manner that they are. And we should.
Okay, you didn't have the comments on the hour here today? So I myself have been, I've been here a while, so I mean, I'm involved with several city officials. Today, I'm leading, or I have been since we started back in December, discussions on the tax rate, and I'm talking about specifically with the city of Port Arthur, with all the other companies. And really to find the metrics associated with hiring Port Arthur residents or utilizing Port Arthur qualified businesses. And I'm not sure, are you familiar with the qualification process that the city has today? So they have a qualification process that a business can apply and get a status from the standpoint that they get, that business will then become a credited industry and then a company, if they use those to work, can actually get credits from associated with, in discussions with the city. The issue is the programs are very difficult to put together and work. And I'll give you an example. I had a mechanical contractor that's located in downtown Port Arthur. I used the individual, but the individual had only about 20% of his employees that actually were Port Arthur residents, but he was a qualified business. I had another business that they're actually located in Monmouth, but 90% of her employees were Port Arthur residents, and she couldn't qualify because her principal resident or her principal place of business was not inside of the city of Port Arthur. So there's a lot of issues that we go through on trying to get metrics together and trying to get Port Arthur residents or Port Arthur businesses hired. There's no organization that exists between 10 companies and 30 Port Arthur residents that meets about six to seven times a year. If you look, that kind of, that organization is actually supported primarily by myself and Motiva. It runs about a $450,000 budget. Motiva and myself pay half of that, the other eight companies pay the other part of it. And you're talking about the 100 individuals that are in the special charter school that in the co-enrollment program. That program got started because of that group. Today, we offer 20 scholarships a year, for two-year scholarships, and then we offer four, four-year scholarships. We have trouble getting enough Port Arthur residents to apply for the 20 two-year scholarships a year. And we end up going to what we call a second chance program. So it's individuals that start strictly straight out of school. There are individuals that have maybe gone out and kind of figured out that they wanted to grow up a little bit, they're in their mid-20s, and they get an opportunity to come back. The only people that can apply for those scholarships are Port Arthur residents. So that organization's been around 12 years, about 14 years, I mean, around that. So in that activity, then we also, you know, continue to look, working with the Texas Workforce Commission and Floyd Batiste with the Economic Development Council, that Floyd has come up with an opportunity to use some of the dollars he has to actually pay part of the salaries for some of the contractors that we have. So if we get a contractor that will agree to hire a selected Port Arthur residence out of the Texas Workforce Commission, that out of the Economic Development Council, in the initial six months from a training standpoint, they will pay part of the salary. So that gives an incentive for contractors that we have to hire Port Arthur residents. And then they can get the battle of six months training that those individuals need to make employees out of. So we've been working with both Floyd and the Workforce Commission and John Hall, and I certainly know him, he's a consultant that's done quite a lot of work here in the city of Port Arthur. He's actually with us in Austin, but we've worked with him on that, we've worked with him on several other instances that we're working to try to get those individuals jobs and then actually incent companies to hire those individuals, to give them the training they need. There's also some life skill training associated with it also, so that individuals know how to manage their bank account and know how to manage the money that they're going to have to have. So there's a lot of activities going on behind the scenes.
I have one other question that pertains to the J-CAD. So we have to, this issue, I have to pay back to... this issue had to pay back to Valero.
Yes, sir.
Because of the value, some is different. Um, do you see that being an issue moving forward with the steady value that you have here for the project? Will that value, uh, down the road change? And will we be having to pay you back? Because we already paid, I think, there's thirty-one, thirty-one million dollars already, I think, back to Valero.
So, that was a very unfortunate incident that could have been avoided. So, if you look back on the history of those events, where Valero had to follow a, a legal action to be able to get evaluation of the refinery in, in line with the valuation of Motiva, and then the valuation of Total, and the valuation of Exxon and Beaumont, that there was a dispute or a personal, personal vindictive between the county appraiser and the individual for Valero that ran the tax department in San Antonio. So, let me give you some numbers. I brought it up here. So, if you look back, and I'm gonna pick, let's pick the year two thousand and twelve. The appraiser came out and valued Motiva refinery at one billion dollars. They valued the Exxon Loco refinery at one point six billion dollars. They valued the Total refinery at one point four billion dollars. They valued the Valero refinery, which, so today, I'm the, I'm the third largest. So, Motiva will claim the largest, Exxon will claim next, I'll claim it, and then Total. They valued the Valero refinery at one point nine billion dollars. So, there's always some discussion that occurs between, during valuation of refineries. So, they immediately came back, and they said, okay, Motiva, you're at eight hundred thousand, eight hundred billion dollars. Sorry. Exxon Loco, you're at eight hundred and twenty-one billion dollars. Total, you're at nine hundred and twelve billion dollars. The final value that we actually got, once we went through the legal action, was one point one-three billion dollars. So, we still paid a higher tax rate on a, on a higher valuation than any of the other three refineries, even after the legal settlement. So, I think at the time, you were more involved than I was, is that there was actually noted, it said, look, the valuation is unrealistic that has been put on the refinery, and it's gonna change, and you, and I think you guys communicated that you guys ought to note that.
Right, and there's new, uh, chief appraiser the last two years. We worked out the value in twenty seventeen last year, and actually, uh, this morning, we worked out the value for twenty seventeen, so there will be no legal dispute this year either. So, we've worked well the last two years with the, uh, new assessment.
But, I mean, I can go through those, uh, you know, I've got them for.
I just wanted to share with you, um, the strain stress they put on this district to operate and educate our children, and be hurt.
But, but I guess what I'm trying to tell you is, but I'm trying to tell you is, we pay more taxes than Motiva and Exxon and Total even after the legal settlement. I mean, so these, you know, I, I pay in the neighborhood thirty million dollars a year between the school district, the city, the, the county, and then the drainage district.
Drainage, yeah, for.
I mean, I think the numbers are in, the, the industry pays ninety to ninety-five percent of the school district's operating budget. That's what the industry pays for, for Port Arthur and the school district today, when you add all of that.
I'm sure Mr. Casey went over this with you, but the beauty of these Chapter Three-Thirteen agreements are that they make the Zinbuwa payments that don't count towards your school finance gap, so that's, that's very helpful, given you the key. Because we don't like sending it off to the state either, so. Well, you guys can keep local, he's better.
I think, I mean, ju- just to, because I got a little bit of passion on, on, on the legal action, because we, we've taken some, some, I, I actually, I think, some bad press from a company's standpoint. I mean, I don't think if you owned a home and your neighbors was the same, that you would want to pay twice the taxes that your neighbor paid.
No, I mean, I totally agree, I mean, I mean, we all as homeowners, all out of rights to pay some challenges, you know, you're on taxes, we may make this kind of a question.
I think your question was whether we thought there was any valuation on those proposals, if there's, there's.
And moving forward, moving forward, we're really getting changes, because that was one of my concerns, look, when we come back and decide, you know, five, five years on the road, and, um, then we're probably even valued at five hundred and some odd million, it's valued at four hundred and ninety-nine, and then we might have to pay you back again.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think.
It hurts me, you know, we look at, we look at where we are right now, we are thirty-one million dollars less than our general fund, uh, and right now, we're in a situation where our teachers need raises, our custodians, our air professionals, our bus drivers, I mean, they're hurting, and these are everyday people, and we need them to educate our children, and they're hurting. And I just wanna ensure that as we move forward, that this type of thing doesn't occur again, that, that we're better again, that some of those benefits, we saw a weakness in those instead of having the base of those, my person. You look at thirty, thirty-one point eight million dollars that we haven't paid back, um, that's a lot of raises, that's, that's a lot of happy people, that's, uh, a lot of equipment that we need, and I mean, it's, it hurts.
I, I understand, but I mean, I think, I'll go, we're back to the comment I made earlier, so I think we were, we were upfront with you guys and said, look, the valuations that were put on our asset were way beyond what we're realistic. Uh, and, and we said, look, you know, put that money away, don't, don't count it and put it in the bank. Valero, I, I, again, I'll, I'll challenge you to go look at our website and go look at, at what we are. We are, try to be an extremely valued park in the areas that we operate in. And we do that by focusing on volunteer council, United Way contributions, the terrific aspect from the standpoint of Valero Texas Open. And then, we also participate in the communities, uh, and I think you see that out, whether it's the, the Valero Kids Fest that just occurred, and we're the key sponsor of that, it means the reason that occurs. That used to occur in Beaumont. I mean, I'm, I'm the one that made the call, says, why, why, if we're in Port Arthur, why are we putting on a Valero Kids Fest in Beaumont? Let's put it in Port Arthur. And hopefully you guys, I don't know if you guys went to it, but, uh, I mean, this year was the largest crowd, it was over four thousand attended, so it was a pretty terrific event. So. I agree with you, Valero wants to pay its fair taxes. I mean, I think we want to pay a fair tax base. Uh, I think this project adds value to the property, which will increase the tax base in the future. So, I think it adds those opportunities. Again, if we're at the ninety-five percent level that industry pays for the operating budget of the school district, I think continuing to add, industry will continue to increase your budget here.
Thank you, Mr. Gentry.
Thank you, Mr. Gentry, Mr. Nelson.
Thank you.
Next on the, uh, on the staff report, we have our bond update, and we are proud of where we are. If you travel around Port Arthur, the district, you will see a lot of construction that is moving up, so we're happy about, um, just about ready to move into Woodrow Wilsons, about ready to move into, uh, Terrell, the expansion, so we're, we're happy with that. So, I'm gonna ask Mr. Governor, Dr. Porter, just to give a overview of our bond project.
Uh, good evening, and, yeah, just to add on what Dr. Porter said, earlier, he said that, uh, things are going calm in the school district and out of the bond program. We don't really have any significant challenges right now. All of our projects are under budget and they're on time. Uh, Wilson is the first project that's been finished, and we are having a final walkthrough on Thursday. Um, we're going to be moving furniture into that project, uh, at the end of this month and into early August. And Terrell is moving along as the next project that will finish. And, um, we are still working on when the actual finish date is gonna be, but it's expected to be in, uh, early September. And then, um, the ninth grade project is going very well, they're starting to enclose the building and, uh, working all the trades inside the building. And then, San Houston and Travis, uh, San Houston is further along than Travis, but those two projects started about the same time. And, uh, you can go by Travis and see the steel erection going up, and, uh, they're, they're doing well, they're, uh, having to deal with a lot of issues with the rain, they always need a little construction. And, uh, down, elementary school is gonna start very soon. Y'all are gonna be considering that, we're going. Um, all of our projects are under budget, and, uh, we're really excited about that. We're watching the money very carefully, and don't see any real challenges as we move forward.
Did you say Terrell when you completed Wilson?
Uh, we, at the end of this month, we'll know a lot better than the actual date, but we're probably, I'd say middle of today, end of September, it'll be finished.
Oh, that sounds, definitely, very nice.
I'm impressed.
Interesting.
Can I piggyback on what you said? I'm fairly by Terrell, and I'm just really impressed. Uh, it's near my house, but, um, the way you guys just shared this with Dr. Porter, the way you guys have, uh, made that brick, just mixed right in with brick that is probably over eight years old, and it's a beautiful building even before you added on to it, I'm sure you agree with that. And, uh, it, it just looks seamless. I really have to give you guys credit for that.
Thank you.
Really doing a good job here.
And we actually, uh, had to look at about six or seven different ground samples to get it to match up to your old building, and I was, I was very surprised that it was as close as imagined it was.
Oh, it's, it's seamless.
Even the workmanship looks very similar, yeah.
I think that's perfect.
Thanks, sir.
Great job.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Governor. Next on staff reports, we would like to give a budget update. So, I am, I'm very pleased with how we have worked with the business office, uh, General Pumpkin, Dr. Edward, uh, Dr. Nine, um, Mrs. Bailey, and Mrs. Longo, are getting some heavy conversations sometimes about our budget, in order for, the main question is how we cut, and that's always the question on the table, how do we cut in order to meet the needs of the districts. So, just kind of would ask Mr. June to go over, um, pretty good, the budget update.
President Ambrose, Vice President Ambrose, and both of the trustees and Dr. Porter, uh, what we presented to you here tonight is just another snapshot of our progress today on trying to, uh, be prepared to finalize and adopt our budget by the end of next month. We have one additional budget discussion on August the tenth, uh, then we will have clarification on what our expenditure tour budget will look like. Uh, right now, what we're presenting to you is in an assumption that the TRE does not pass. Uh, so, we, this is in line with our other discussion that we had at our last workshop, just to tell you. Tonight, we want to, uh, provide you a little information about the historical expenditure tours per student, uh, look a little bit at our benchmark data, provide you just a little information that we can find out about the legislative update, uh, the whole of the revenue projections that we have so far in our plan, uh, providing some information on our new initiatives, and of course, giving an opportunity to go over and get questions. Regarding our historical, uh, expenditure tours per students, we've given you two looks, and at, at our last budget workshop, we discussed the function code, how important function code is to a school district in keeping track of its expenses. Uh, so, again, we're providing you with information on the historical information about our expenditure tours. We're showing you from, from twenty thirteen fourteen up to sixteen seventeen, what our actuals have looked like. And if you look here, look at our actuals, it really shows that, for example, there's a decrease in, in some of our categories. Um, you'll, you will find, um, that we actually have done all we can with the dollars that we've been seeing. Um, can you move to the next slide? This one, I think, is should a little bit higher, look, little, less numbers to look at, but it actually shows you our payroll costs, for example. And if you remember when we discussed at the last budget workshop, we told you how important object code was to us. Um, here, we're breaking it down so that you can see the payroll costs from thirteen fourteen, uh, up until sixteen seventeen budget. You can see the, the difference in, in our costing. You can see, just taking fifteen sixteen compared to sixteen seventeen, that we had to reduce our payroll cost. Um, how did we reduce our payroll cost? This had to do with vacancies that we were unable to fill as a result of less dollars available, uh, to spend. Um, additionally, our supplies was reduced by six hundred and sixty-four thousand. Uh, we did slightly increase our, um, operating expenses. That's a result, our operating expenses include things like, um, where we have to provide matching funds if we receive a grant, uh, our weekly grant, for example. The district has to provide matching funds from the general fund to help, um, pay for the, or subsidize the, not the grant. Um, then in debt services, we didn't really have any expenses there. And capital layout, notice that in thirteen fourteen, we had three hundred and sixty-six thousand, but notice that we, we only had in our budget forty-three thousand in sixteen We wanted to also, as I said, give you a little bit insight into our benchmark staffing information, and we, we provide this information to you, and it's on our website, if you will go under financial transparency, uh, on the business office website, we update this information on an annual basis. We take the T E, T E A's data from other school districts, uh, and we compare ourselves to those other school districts. We did not come up with a list of districts to compare ourselves to. We actually had some help from TASB, and these were the districts that they felt would be ones that we should benchmark ourselves against. Now, notice that Port Arthur, as far as the total base salaries, and that's in millions there, um, that are approximately FTE's twelve hundred and forty-five, uh, employees, forty-seven, forty-eight million is in, is in our base salaries, and, um, that includes about an average of thirty-eight thousand per employee. When you look at the administrative staff, so we heard comments, uh, from others, uh, that have asked, or thought we, we might be spending a few minutes just to provide benchmark data comparing the administrative staff. And again, this data comes from T E, and notice where T were Port Arthur falls in line with the other school districts. We are not the highest, and we're not the lowest, but we're, we're sub, we're at fifteen, for administrators, we have fifty-nine administrators as compared to some other school districts that have significantly more. But, actually, yeah, look at, look at South, San Antonio is sixty-two, uh, on the administrative. And notice our base salaries for our administrators, and then the total, the average salary for administrators is seventy-one thousand. We also gave, uh, provided some additional information on our teacher staffing. Notice on the teacher staffing that Port Arthur, again, who still remain around the middle, um, we were about forty-seven thousand for the average, uh, salary for our teachers, um, with about four, five hundred and forty-three teachers. This is based on twenty fifteen sixteen data. Legislative update. I'm sure you've heard, though, wanted to point out that as we're looking at our budget, and again, it, under the assumption that the TRE does not pass, if in fact, the special session should begin on the eighteenth, and if it is successful in raising the teacher pay about thousand dollars, we estimate that that will cost the district somewhere around six hundred and sixty-two thousand, and we will need to find ways to cut in order to fund, this is an unfunded mandate, or will be if it passes. This is a loaded number that we're providing to you. When I say loaded, it includes the benefits. Then on the property tax reform, we understand, we're not sure, we, we, we just wanted to point out that, uh, as the. as the state continually decreases their share of money, the local districts are, we're bolstering to find ways to increase our taxes, just in order for us to survive. For example, back in twenty fif, two thousand five, when the state had Centennial one, Houseville one, they actually went in and they decided we were at all of the dollar, we were at, for our absolute district, we were at a dollar fifty for our taxes. Well, the state had us to lower that, we lowered it to a dollar four. And the state covered the difference. The statement that I was told, I really wasn't here when it first was done. But what I was told was the premise was that the state was going to cover the additional expenses that the local districts would incur as a result of the lower taxes. What happened is the state did do that for a while. That was called additional state aid. Well, that legislation was only for a period of time, it's over. And so now, if we, if we are lower than the two thousand and five, not current, not the current taxes, not the current revenues, not the current needs of the district. But when we were in two thousand and five, the districts, this is across the state, must pay themselves, make up the difference themselves. Because the state is no longer paying to recover any of the costs that the district has incurred. Then we understand that T R E's, rollback elections, they, they may include that as part of the legislative agenda for the, in July. Now let's just look a little bit at our revenue projections compared to our sixteen seventeen and seventeen eighteen. Our general fund, we're looking at the existing template that's available. And that's how we, how we calculate our projected, our general fund, the majority of our general fund dollars. So it incorporates any changes that the legislators have already made into, provide to the districts. We also look in our general fund, we'll look a little deeper. But if you look, what we're, what we're thinking will happen is we'll get somewhere close to about four hundred and eighty-four thousand more in general fund from sixteen seventeen to seventeen eighteen. Keep in mind, for sixteen seventeen, we reduced our overall general fund by about eight million dollars as a result of the reductions in property values. So we had to figure out how to cut expenses. And we ended up using our fund balance to subsidize other things that we needed to do in the district. Our special revenue fund, these are the categories that the board must approve, adopt in office. Well, the special revenue fund is actually your child nutrition fund. And in that case, we're, right now, we're only projecting a small decrease. And then our debt service, that is repaying our debts based on the bonds. And we have a debt schedule that shows that we will be spending about half a million dollars less in the government's budget. Again, as I promised, we would go a little bit deeper. The numbers to the side, the fifty-seven hundred, that's how we track. And again, I'm taking you back to our budget workshop that we had where we explained to you how we track things based on the objects. Well, at fifty-seven hundred is really your local fund. Fifty-eight hundred is your state funds and fifty-nine is your federal fund. For the general fund, we've provided you with the data to show you the percentage of our general fund, which is, comes from local, state, and federal. It's nothing for us to go in great details. We've provided you with the information for your review at your leisure. But we just want to point out that we've provided you with a little bit more details as to how our general fund is made up. We go a little deeper in this slide to further provide you with information as far as how our local funding is actually made up. And it shows you that we've included, for example, property taxes. With our assumption right now is that we will get around thirty-six million in property taxes. Our in lieu of agreement, we've put in the same value that we had this current year. In the past, we have gone from about eight million in in lieu of taxes, revenues, to now to about three point seven million. For our state funding, they work hand in hand. The twenty-five million is part, is the foundation funds and then the for capital, which is just another formula driven pool of dollars that the district receives. It's about one point six million. The refund that's shown there, six hundred million, under tax refund and credit. The chapter three thirteen degree, the way it works is, we, it's part of the agreement that we are to refund dollars to the refinery. But what we're showing on this particular slide is, we receive those dollars back from the state. So we're, we're made whole, we do not lose any dollars there. That last category, if you're wondering, what is that other program aid? Three point eight million, that's our T R S. And the way the state funding works is, we are required to pay the portion that the state has committed to pay for T R S, employees pay their part. But the state is also committed to pay a portion for T R S for your retirement, for our retirement. And this is that portion that's shown there. It's a wash for us, just as we recognize additional revenues, we also recognize expenses. Fifty-nine hundreds on our federal funding. We are showing, this is not all the federal funds that the district received. These are only the, we're only showing you the federal funds, not the grants. But these, this is just the special revenue funds for school lunch program. And then it shows the dollars that we receive for Medicaid. That's the basics, federal funds that we receive. We didn't provide, in the past, we provided you with a long laundry list of new initiatives and what the district is doing. But as a result of a lack of funds, we really do not have a lot of new initiatives that the district can implement. We, we know that we have a, the new initiative, have a new staff requirements for our new built-in early college high schools. So we will be adding those additional dollars to our staffing. The other additional staffing, what we have done in the past is, we know that we have jobs, that teacher positions that we need to fill. And those positions are, when we look at our budget, we just not put it in there in some cases because we know we're gonna, we just don't have enough money to fund it. But our essence here is, I want to see a total picture. So you're gonna see an increase in additional staffing. It may not be dollars available to pay for all the staff that, that the district really needs in order to be fully functional. But we're gonna show the total staffing requirement for the district. Are there any questions?
Trustee Lawson?
Yes. Of that seventy-three, if you can see what you have for the general fund for seventeen eighteen, is that with the thousand dollar teacher raise that it might have, yeah?
The seventy-three, what page are you on?
Uh, page thirteen. But that's the general fund seventy-three million?
That is, this is revenues. This is not expense side. So revenues, we're not, as far as I know, this is an unfunded mandate. If the, if the state provides us additional revenues, it would be included here. But we did not hear, we have not been told.
When will we find that out?
Well, the session doesn't start until eighteen. But it's, they already said, it's already said that it's an unfunded mandate. The districts must find a way to fund the faculty tax, the thousand dollars more for teachers. It's, it's, they've already stated that.
Okay. I have to go through it. And also, you know how many teachers, total staff, that we're gonna need for whatever we're listing?
Supposedly, teachers approximately ten, ten to twelve at this time.
And what about administrators?
Well, we have one principal, we have a counselor at present. But as we move forward, right, the first year, we have two hundred students. But as we move forward, we will have to add staff. At the, at the end, we'll have four or five students, yes, yeah.
Miss Gaines, on revenues, is, are we still in a projection mode from the appraisal district?
The reason why I say that, Ms. Gaines, and I know you know this, but like any unfunded mandates that we have coming out from the legislature doing that because they want the appraisal districts to be the, the main funding mechanism, of course, is this correct in terms of revenues?
Well, it, it is a limit. And but for, the state has a state funding formula where they provide some funds. But to answer the first part of your question, we don't have a final certified tax rule. However, for us, since we are going out for a tax ratification election, we've already adopted our tax rate based on the preliminary values that we receive. However, the preliminary values, and I receive a report about every two weeks on the values, they stay constant, it's not, they're slightly under the values that we receive when we adopted our tax rate on June the twenty-seventh. Therefore, I don't expect the numbers that we are showing right now to be significantly different in as a result of the values.
And just to be clear, so that our taxpayers in the school district understand, number one, we're not gonna be getting any more money than we normally get from the state. And you've already said it's correct.
That's correct.
Okay. And then also, your projections in terms of revenues and what we have to spend, this is considering that we do not have anything coming in from the T R E.
That's correct.
This is mine, well, not mine, but without the addition.
That's correct. And our assumption here is no, no compensation at all.
Correct.
We will not have dollars available to do that.
Yeah, and I, I'm sorry, I just wanted to stress that, just so the public understands. Thank you, Mr. Ambrose, thank you very much.
Trustee Jordan?
Ms. Jean, would it be possible at a later date to provide a snapshot of who we look like in region five? I noticed that we have a lot of schools from different parts as it pertains to our teachers and our staffing. But could we get some type of comparison to see what we look like regionally? And the reason for that, and if possible, a cost of living comparison to all those other areas that you suggested, the higher pay and the lower pay? So that we have, we have real numbers, real data to compare what our teachers here are really realizing and how much more that they're netting or how much less that they're netting. I think that it's a misconception to say that fifty thousand dollars is an ideal goal when we want to be as close to Maytime as possible. And Houston, when the cost of living in those areas is significantly different. So if this is possible, could we get some type of data that will show that comparison as well? And our only concern with region five, when we start comparing and looking at other areas as far as what we pay, I think it will reflect that we are at the top in region five in our compensation factor, if I'm not mistaken. And there's a, there's a window between seven years and fifteen years. It's something that we can tweak and we can adjust so that we can become more competitive in lieu of any event that we, that the T R E doesn't pass. So in that event, and the second part of my question refers to the exploration of a three thirteen degree that's upon us. When will we expect that exploration? What is the exact date of that exploration for that three thirteen degree?
Okay, to respond to your first question, cost of living data, I don't have it readily available. I'll see if I can find some cost of living information to, in order to provide some comparative analysis. But region five, the reason region five is not included in our benchmark data, we have benchmarked ourselves for salary information. And Tasky has provided benchmark data, which we've shared with the, with the school board before in regards to salary information. But the information that I provided included not, not those school districts because when you look at benchmarking yourselves, you're not just looking at those that are in your area. For example, Beaumont ISD is twice the size of our school district as far as the number of students. So they're not comparison, not a good comparative, not a good comparison for us. Similarly, what nature says not because they don't have near the number. And try to compare ourselves with Sabine Pass. And Sabine Pass has only a handful. So in order to compare yourself, what Tasky has recommended, and again, this is not us doing the comparison. This is, we provided. Yes, sir.
So Beaumont is twice our size. Are their teachers paid, paid more than our teachers?
I believe their teacher pay is somewhere very close to ours, I believe today.
It's a significant, we talked about compensation for our, for our district employees compared to their district board. Would you say?
We, we can, we can get you the benchmark data as, as far as, as what the same data that you see. We'd be glad to provide those based on the regions.
And I want to make sure that citizens understand how important it is, how important T R E is. And they actually have a good picture of what we really look like on paper compared to other areas. So when we're, when we are competing for certified teachers and we realize that that pool is very small, money does not always answer the call.
Understood. That, that's really not what we're trying to provide when we look at benchmark data. There are several variables that are used. And it includes the size of the number of students. It includes the similarity to, to your, to our area with the number of economic disadvantaged students. Oh, some of the other school districts in region five do not compare to us in the data that we shoot. If you would like to.
Oh, yes, sir.
All of each other for one?
Yes.
They're already chapters.
We are already chapter for one. And we are high, we have a high number. And which, we're considered, and let me, that's a word, Mr. James, let me say this. When you look at the high, the social economics status of this community, you're looking at the percentage, the percentage of this community is high, eighty-five percent. And that is not gonna change overnight.
That's, that's a large number.
It's a large number and it's very healthy. Mr. Ambrose, let me just, I want to take Mr. Gilery. I do like your idea of, of cost of living statistics for not just Port Arthur, but our region five area. And Ms. James, if you could get some data from Tasky, I think that's a really good idea, Trustee Gilery. I, a couple of factors to consider is that one of the great benefits of our district is that we pay the social security. There's only a handful of districts in the state of Texas that do that. And you showed your hand, yeah. Exactly, yeah, right. And, and, and when you get to be my age and I'm in the, in the business, that's a great advantage. However, it is taking a percentage of your check out. So when, yes, it is taking a percentage. And so when we're competing for these teachers coming out of college, their take home pay's gonna be lower. Now, they don't look at it like that because. Now, they don't look at it like that because when I, I, my first eight years working in Port Arthur, and I, I, I did not like that, of course, now, getting there, retiring, I think that this is great, you know? But the thing is, is that we have to consider that, that regardless of the salaries, our teacher, uh, our teachers have less take home pay than the other region five teachers, hands down. Another factor too, is that the insurance costs are rising for everybody. Now, even with a thousand dollar raise, when you take out social security, when you take out T R S, and if you are a teacher with dependents, you're, like Ms. Jeans just said earlier, and she wasn't exactly talking about this, but it's a wash. You know, it's, it's a wash, however, and that's the unfunded mandate, you know? To be competitive, I know that's what we're looking at, as a district to be competitive anyway. Thank you.
Okay, the second part of your question had to do with when would we, um, be subject to recapture cost? Uh, we will be subject to recapture cost in twenty nineteen, twenty. When I say twenty nineteen, twenty, I'm speaking of the fiscal year twenty nineteen, twenty. Um, we will go out for a, um, chapter forty-one election, and that will be, I believe, in the fall or the spring of twenty nineteen.
The election will determine how we pay back the money. It's not a question of if we pay it back, the question is how we do it, and that is what the community will vote on.
You're talking about the election with the T R E?
No, I mean, the, the, the election for, uh, recapture. What she, what she's saying is that we're going to have in two thousand, if we do nothing, if everything stays as it, as is, we still will start paying back recapture costs in two thousand nineteen, twenty. The voters will decide how, that's going to be thirteen to seventeen million dollars that we're going to pay back to the state. That is factual, so now the voters will decide how we do that.
So what you're saying to me is that we're going to receive money?
We're going to receive money, and we're going to pay back.
Out of the receipt?
Out of the money we receive.
Even if we don't receive any, if, if it stays at a dollar four, we still will owe thirteen million dollars. It has nothing to do with the increase in our taxes. Well, we have given you the number of the T R E. It's going to come from the increases of the values. What we mentioned to you before is that the values, sir, will increase when chapter, for the chapter three thirteen agreement for Motiva is fully operational and, uh, online, and the M and O taxes will actually be recognized on the tax roll for collection, it will almost double our values. But instead of those values, the dollars coming back to the district, it's not like it would be in a private industry. Just because you receive the dollars does not mean you get to keep those dollars.
So it doesn't benefit us, is what she's saying?
Well, yes, it doesn't, I see.
It doesn't?
We're looking at another.
That does, if what we've benefited, you should see my chart where it shows the three point, six million dollars, Mr. Gilery, where we've received in chapter three thirteen, the M and O agreement dollars, and I mentioned that it was up to eight million. Those are dollars that the district received, that the state did not negate what they gave us, and we were able to get those dollars and use those dollars to benefit the court office, teachers and others in the district to do things. We used them, for one year, we, we gave one point, three million dollars in incentive pay. We took those from our chapter three thirteen dollars to pay our employees. We could not give a raise, but we were able to use the dollars from our chapter three thirteen agreements to give an incentive pay based on attendance.
So Dr. Gilery, there is absolutely no claim possible to retain any benefit from the three thirteen agreement?
Yes, that's, I think, Mr. Casey, they say there are, there are lots of benefits for our district.
That's, that's the beginning point, I'm talking about as, as we're, as we're about to, uh, receive the three thirteen, um, I don't know what that looks like, I don't know if it's going to be thirty billion or thirty-six million, I have no idea what the.
It would be, it would be the thirty million, and we would receive benefit from that, yes.
And you said, yeah, but.
Okay, okay.
In order, in order, in order for us to increase our, basically what you're saying is, there's no way possible for us to in, increase our, uh, finances to cover our operating costs. There's no way, uh, all the money that we're going to receive and take in, there's absolutely, there's nothing in that that says that we're going to have, uh, five percent or ten percent that can be allocated to.
Let me, let me say this, and, but it's, it's two, it's two different things that we're talking about. We're talking of the three thirteen agreement, which there is the benefit. When we talk about the recapture cost, the laws, there are laws from the state that says you can run this district at a certain level. Anything that comes in addition from local funds will be returned to the state. So in that aspect, there is no benefit, that's the law, we cannot negate the law. However, with a chapter three thirteen agreement, there are benefits. As we move along with the negotiations with Mr. Gentrey, who's very generous, as you heard earlier, there will be, uh, big negotiations with the, with the company, and we possibly can get some things in work together for some of the things you just talked about, jobs for our community, we always look at what's beneficial, beneficial for our students, but also for our community, and we'll let our residents know that they are open to negotiations and whatever else they need to do in order to get this done.
They're going to be good neighbors.
They, they already are.
Trustee?
Now, Vice President, that concludes our staff report.
Thank you. Moving on, the, um, minutes, considering it appropriate, approve the minutes of June twenty-second, two thousand seventeen, will be in the motion?
So move.
Say.
Uh, motion by Mr. Lofton, second by Mr. Martin, all in favor? Aye. Oppose? The minutes are approved from June twenty-second, two thousand seventeen. Don't be concerned, Jenny, please, trust me, let's review them briefly. Numbers one, two, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, and ten. Excuse me, nine.
I need control number, uh.
She just pulled it.
Keep or pass or?
Can I get a motion on those here? Files number one.
And I also need to confuse myself for.
Number eight.
So pull number eight, sir.
We'll pull number eight.
Pull number eight.
All right, let's start over. So I'm asking for a motion on items one and two, items four through seven, excuse me, items four through eight, and item nine.
Motion.
Motion by Trustee Reed, can I get a second?
Sir.
Second by Trustee Martin. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose? Those items are approved. Uh, item number three, consider and if appropriate, rescind agreement with county for two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen ASAP program and approve revised agreement with the P I S D and Constable Christopher Bates of precinct two for the remainder of the two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen school year. Can I get a motion?
Not a president, vice president, a move that would wait the third day waiting period and rescind contract with county for running ASAP program and enter a new contract effective immediately with Constable Christopher Bates and precinct two.
Motion?
Second.
Second.
It has been more discussing, discussing.
You can discuss that.
Okay, there's a motion by.
I may be motion.
Mr. Lofton, second by Mr. Martin. Discussion, Mr. Gilery?
I love the ASAP program, it's going to be in good hands with Mr. Bates. Um, Mr. Bates has a lot of accolades, he has, uh, achieved a tremendous amount in a very short time, and I want to say thank you for your, your career service to our city, uh, and to our district. And I would be remiss if I didn't have a, a small discussion, uh, about a man, uh, who spent thirty-eight years, um, providing service to our city. Um, I think that this, this, uh, passing of the torch, if you will, uh, comes with bad timing, in my opinion. Uh, simply because Constable Collins is, is, is ill, uh, and recovering rapidly, uh, I might add. Um, this is a man that I've known and has known me, uh, before I was born. A man of good courage, a man that you can always call, and a man that you can count on if you're in a scrape, you know, and questioned. We're talking about a man of high moral values, uh, good character, fairness. I don't think there's anyone in City of Portland that resides in the city, um, can't possibly have to make a phone call uh, to Constable Collins, uh, for his, uh, shoulder, his, his advice, uh, and maybe even some of his legal assistance. Um, it's, it hurts me tremendously, um, especially when program was not broke. Um, he gave, um, employment to individuals, um, that we, you know, um, had questions about. But he had faith in those individuals, he believed in those individuals, uh, he counted on those individuals. Uh, it showed, uh, in, in our trusty, uh, looking at, um, where we are right now, where we were over the last two and a half years, uh, there hadn't been anything evident up until now that dictated, indicated that our program was in jeopardy. So I want to make sure that, um, that I bring that to the attention of this board. Um, he has not even received a give well card, a thank you, would appreciate your service. It's, uh, I'm feeling it right now, I've been feeling it for some time. Um, he's hurt, he's hurt by it, he's hurt by the relationships that, that he felt, and, uh, that would at least give him the common courtesy of a sit down, or handshake, or how you doing? It's, uh, it's no good feeling for me right now, at all, at all. Because if we do it all alone, it's, um, it's horrible, it's horrible, it's deplorable. It could have been done much, 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 much better, with a lot more class and a lot more taste. I mean, I would have loved to have seen him here today, passing the torch to Constable Bates and assuring me, I know this program is in good hands. That's an honorable thing to do. And, and I'm hurting, I'm hurting, he's hurting, his family's hurting. And I want to share that with you, because I don't want to, to go on and say that he has dedicated a tremendous amount of his life to our safety. I can't recall any descriptions, um, taking past, coups, or anything else that would reflect that he was unworthy of at least a, a give well card. Or who care flowers, a phone call, I'm hurting. This, this is, again, I know it's in good hands. Constable Bates is, 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 is an incredible, incredible guy, and I know he would do a fine job for us. I would just have loved to have seen him passing the torch in, in a more appropriate manner.
Mr. Gilery, was there, was there some, was there another point that you were trying to make? Because I'd like to kind of expound on what you just said, sir, and I want to make it clear to everyone, this has nothing to do, with all due respect to Constable Collins, it's not about Constable Collins, it's about what's best for our students and our district. Um, we all know that Constable Collins has had health challenges this year, but by no means this is board trying to, to do anything to, 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 you know, take advantage of what he's done, or, I'm, I'm not quite sure your point is, because.
My point is, this is real simple, I know what I've done, and I know how I reached out to him, and I cooked for him, and I went to see him about him, and I checked on him, and after doing that, I don't know, the last, I guess it was first school, I go back and check on his house, I check on his daughter, you know, and the family is under a lot of, uh, stress and unrest, and again, you can't imagine, uh, what this feels like for somebody that's so prideful, and, and takes so much pride in, in, in the work that he's committed himself a lifetime to, and, and again, our kids and constables that have, that are employed now, that will report to Constable Bates, they did their job. There wasn't, there wasn't a time when, and I know we've heard some, some, some criticism because we can't, we can't find anybody in contact. I can call him, I'll call him right now. I mean, it's always been something or a reason, um, and I, again, didn't want to get, uh, off into that aspect, I just want to say that, um, at least what he had done was, said thank you, and, um, at least had a, had, had a ceremony in which he would have been invited, and we would have shown, extend our gratitude to him, and make him a part of this, uh, because he is the legacy in our community.
And I, I agree with that too, and I want to make it clear again, this has absolutely nothing to do.
I understand.
It's not a personal issue, Mr. Gilery, for what's best for our school.
This, Vice President, I'm calling for a vote. The item is, this, this is about, uh, revised agreement between D I S D and precinct two, a call, a call order.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
No.
Item number?
Three.
Three.
Number eight, I believe. Oh, seven.
No, seven. Seven is not a natural one.
Seven. Consider and if appropriate, approve the term or finding group incorporated application for appraised value limitation on qualified property to authorize superintendent to review the application for completeness and submit to the controller, and to authorize superintendent to enter into any agreement to extend the deadline for more action beyond one hundred and fifty days, subject to the board of ratification. Can I get a motion?
Motion, say.
Motion by Mr. Reed, and second by Mr. Martin. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Did you, you put your abstention on the?
I abstained.
Mr. Lofton, abstaining on the record.
All right, personal, Dr. Gilery?
Yeah, Vice President, I have given you the list of teachers for consideration.
Okay, we have reviewed the list of, um, the reported teachers, can I have a motion?
So move, say.
Motion by Trustee Lofton, second by Trustee Martin. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Next, uh, for your consideration, I'm asking for employment of Assistant Principal of Memorial High School, this is Loyce Campbell.
Is there a motion?
So move.
Say.
Uh, motion by Trustee Martin, second by Trustee Reed, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
I am pulling the consideration for employment of Constable of Memorial, ninth grade.
Uh, information, Dr. Gilery?
And it's just, basically, I wish I could see that I still support the motion, but it didn't work, really wasn't up to the task.
If there's an opening discussion, I call for a adjournment this meeting.
So move.
Second. Motion by Mr. Lofton, second by Trustee Martine, all in favor?
Aye.